For April 28, 2025, can we have roll call, please?
Councillor Cicalla.
Here.
Councillor Crissati.
Here.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Mangini.
Here.
Councillor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councillor Russo.
Here.
Councillor Santinella. And Councillor Ungeyer.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. Tonight is the Proposed Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Fiscal Year of January 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. And we will start off this evening with a presentation of the Town Manager's Budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, board, and guests. We had done our presentation, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So Alex is going to play that for you. That way, I won't make any faux pas or mistakes and be embarrassed. I got through it once, Ms. Gina, and I was happy. So I think I'll stick with a proven product. And with that, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, residents at home. The budget presentation, the way I've done it in the past, is really, it's a blueprint for the future, and I think it's kind of a review of what we've done in the past from the last budget or two. And like I've said, it's a relay. Some of these projects were started before me, and I finished some. We've started some, and the next fellow or lady will finish some. Ellen started some and handed them to me. Brian Chakoski started some. And as I've said in the past, it's a relay. It's a relay. And we'll hand the baton off soon. But the council also. It's important for us to have your support in all of these matters, to get all of these things accomplished for the people of Enfield. And I'd like to just thank all of the directors and their staffs for their hard work in preparing the budget for my presentation. And then for the presentation itself, I thank John Wilcox, his invaluable assistants, the Assistant Manager, Steve Belinda. And I'd also, you'll see during the presentation, we had input from Heatheren Breton. She's Assistant Finance Director. Kristi Koysten also helped. And I think they did a fine job. And Alex always as well. I'd like to thank Cheryl Eckenroth, our Executive Secretary, for juggling all of this and being the traffic cop while we put this all together. So, next slide, please, John. As I said, we'll review some of the projects at this council and some before you funded that came to fruition this year. I think it's important for our residents to see where their tax dollars are going in the CIP and also in other areas. Next. That was Heatheren added that. I thought it was a nice touch, John. Just to look at a couple of the projects that we had funded over the last year or two that had been completed. The bridge over Freshwater Pond, which was derelict. And it looks so nice now for the folks that live down there and use the area. The bottom left, this council funded new doors and a generator for the EMS, and those have been completed. The upper center, Town Hall started a project. Again, this was one that was relayed from Ellen and her administration to me to finish these bathrooms with Steve that hadn't been done in, I don't know, 50 or 60 years. Those have just been completed. And I'll tell you, the staff is very thankful in Town Hall. A lot of people exercised, got their steps in going up and down the three stories of, well, different bathrooms were out of use. The upper right, I'm very happy. It's been well received. The council supported to put in some back the receptions we used to have. It's been very, very well accepted. We have more residents every day telling our folks. They used to come into the stairwell in the back and get lost out of the park. And now they come in the front, and they're directed, and they're appreciative of it. The bottom right, we'll have a grand opening. Hopefully, I will be here. I believe I will be for 810 Enfield Street again. That was over the last two councils. We funded it. Ellen bought the building, and then we went and we outfitted it. And we'll be ready to move in for one-stop shopping at that Enfield Express for any developers or town people who want to get permits or their pools. It'll help them. And then the bottom center is the bridge down on River Street that was completed again before me, but it's such a nice project. It opens up the boat launch, and it'll be used for North River Street development and the train. Next, John. I think this, this spanned over a couple of years, too. And we have the Powder Hollow, and we have, on the right, the high school. The update is Powder Hollow is almost complete. The high school drainage started in the fall. They're almost there. Within a month or two, they will be complete. The drainage work has been started. And again, what a testament to this council that, for years, it was too daunting a task to try to reconfigure and fix the drainage at the high school because the estimates are over $1 million. We were innovative. We brought people in. They gave us a presentation on a new system. And for about $200,000, all of those new fields will be available by the end of the summer. And I think that's, again, a testament to this council's vision. Next. Higgins Park, again, started with me. A lot of it completed with Ellen. And then the final, this council pushed it over the finish line with the Band Shell. It's beautiful. The upper right, those are all the beautiful lights that were added. This council finished Higgins Park, so you can see in the evening, people can come and enjoy the playscape and the basketball and the concerts. Steve Belinda has done an amazing and outstanding job on this concert series. He made us proud. We'll have it again this year with a kickoff June 3. Steve is very hometown-oriented. He knows this town is, too. So we're going to have Johnny Sixgun. They'll be kicking off the summer concert series at the Band Shell, June 3, 2025. And all the shows, Steve, are at 6:00.
At 7:00.
7:00. And they'll be continuing right through June, July, and August. So please come out and attend. And also, we're arranging to livestream them. So like we said, folks at home can enjoy it as well if they can't get out. Next, John. I think this is another accomplishment of this council. It was an amazing, the timeframe in which you implemented this, once you came in and decided that you wanted to reinstitute the SSO program. So I thought it was important to put it up with the information for our residents to review. And we fully funded it again for next year. And I think they've really become part of the schools in which they serve. So we wanted to make a comment and thank you. And also, a special thanks to Chief Rick Fox because his work, diligence, and dedication in basically starting a new police department in under a year was an amazing task. And we thank him, Deputy Chief Kozelouskas. And Captain Nolan is the one who's the liaison to the program with the schools. And I hear very good reports back from the superintendent and from the Chairwoman, Charlotte Riley. Next. This is just to visit some of the businesses that have come into town in the last year or so. L.L. Bean, as you know, it's the largest, I believe, L.L. Bean store outside of Lewiston, Maine. It's 25,000 square feet. Again, they perused the whole northeast corridor, and they chose Enfield. Bottom left, Pierogi Queen, bigger and better. And up on the right, the newest addition, this Black Crow Coffee around the corner that many of you have stopped by, and we encourage you to do so. Going forward. Next. These are some of the projects that this council has started and that I hope will be completed in the next couple of years. These are quite amazing. On the left, you can see the 33 River Street project, and we'll show that in a moment. The governor came out to talk about it and give us an award of $4 million in brownfields for the river project and for the Enfield marketplace. The upper right is a job fair that we put on at Nuntuck in September, which was heavily attended, and I hope that they'll do it again this year. And on the bottom right was the governor, our keynote speaker at our business breakfast, where he came in and we thanked him for his funding of the train station. And we hope to invite him. Again, I hope you have the breakfast in September. We can thank him for the square and the CIF and the brownfields as well. He's been very, very good to the town of Enfield. Next. This is what I alluded to. This is the envision meant of 33 North River Street. At this point, three to four stories, 150 luxury units. That's the first phase. They received the $4 million through DECD, and we're working with them to get this ground broken. And then they have a second phase, which is of equal size, which would hopefully include a park to give access to the river and also other retail restaurants and businesses. Because again, this is directly across from Bigelow and the new train station. Next. The Enfield marketplace. We received the good news about the $10 million last week from the, it was the bond commission voted on it, from the CIF, and also the $4 million in DECD. The developers are working overtime. We speak to them every day. I spoke to them today. We'll be speaking with them tomorrow. They're moving forward at a very rapid rate, and they still believe that they will be able to commence demolition of this late summer. They thought July could be a little later, but by early fall. And again, 450 luxury apartments, two hotels. They're talking to restaurants. I know at the business breakfast, they had mentioned Whole Foods and some of those stores, and they're working still today towards getting those as tenants. Next. This is very exciting. Several years ago, this council had the vision to implement the TIF districts. On the left, you can see the current TIF district, which we just put in, the area that covers Thompsonville, but it also covers the mall area. We currently in that fund, and I won't get into the details, but we have $1.75 million there. We used some of that to help us with the square. We're now looking, the council has referred this to subcommittee, to say, okay, what other businesses do we want to help? Smaller businesses, other projects that we can do for smaller developers there. So one of the things this council had done, Aaron Markovich brought in the planners from across the country a couple of weeks ago, and they had a plan with sort of ideas for projects in Thompsonville. One of them was that the town sponsor outdoor dining in different areas. So we just put up quickly, Kristy, three areas where we could sponsor the outdoor dining to bring people into Thompsonville. We would, out of the TIF funds, buy the tables and the umbrellas. You can see they put the Enfield insignia and that of the businesses. We're thinking maybe five sites. The total cost, we already got a quote, would be maybe $80,000. But let's invest in those people who have invested in Enfield already. So that's just one idea. I said we wanted to try to implement from the report, and that's the one we chose for now. And there will be others coming forward. Next. Well, thank you, Ronnie Salas. If you look at the top picture, that's a picture, and you know where that is. In Thompsonville, the Strom Medical Center. He took it over. And now you can see the bottom, what a facade restoration can do, night and day. What we would like to do, on the right, going forward, you should consider the Route 5 TIF district going up the center of Route 5 to the state line. We are the gateway to Connecticut, so let's look like it. We need to refurbish. And we can do that through CDBG funds that Kristy has already talked to the state, that we could actually like the furniture. We pick the model that we'd like to see coming in, and we go to the businesses and say, if you'd like to do the facade. And you can come up with matching or in whole or a certain amount, but then it would be according to the town's design, and all those folks coming into the town now will say, wow, and feel the beautiful. Next. All right, down to the nitty-gritty. General fund revenue. We need to raise money to pay for our budget, for the services that we provide our residents. We only have a couple of ways that we do it. Primarily, the first one you can see is our property taxes. $98 million is raised there. Motor vehicle, $10 million. We're going to talk about that later. Other taxes, about $11 million. Intergovernmental revenues, $33 million, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. That's from the state and federal government. Charges that we charge for services is about $1,005,000 that we bring in. And investments, $1,009,000. Fines and forfeitures are small. That's sort of like the, you know, shoveling walks or those type of things. $6,000 in license and permits is mostly like from Ray Stedward, building permits. When they come in and they are going to do a project, they have to pay the building permit. Bring in about $1,002,000 a year. And in the other one up above, services, a lot of those are town clerk. All right. Next slide. So I said we bring in about, intergovernmental funding, about $33 million. It's level from last year. There are some smaller programs, some come and go, but John knows these are the big ones that we've counted on, and there's no indication they're going to curtail them in the state. So payment in lieu of real property taxes, 1.3. And what that is, that's where the state, we get a lesser reimbursement on state property, so they make up the difference for us, such as Nuntuck, when we used to have the DMV and places that the state owns. No more colleges, as Nuntuck is out. But local capital improvement, 440. Town road, we bring in $511,000 from the state. Municipal projects, 256. This has been, as you can see, pretty much stable for several years. The Mash and Tucket Pequot money, 1.2. And the ECS cost sharing from the state, $29 million last year. We're projecting, John, we don't know yet, but it's safe to, he didn't increase it. So we're at $33,608,000. That's outside revenues from the state. Next, John. All right. So this is what everybody is most interested in. What are we going to do going forward? You can look at the 2025 adopted budget. Board of Ed was $77 million. Town was 76, for a total of 154. Go to the left, our proposed budget. The Board of Ed has put in, their budget would be $81,741. My budget on the town side is $80,382, for a total of 162. And if you look at the far right, you can see the percentage of change, and it's an increase, not a decrease. 5.57% from the Board of Ed, 4.67% from the town. So blended, the increase to the town taxes would be 5.12%. Next slide. These, I think it's important, in addition to the $80 million that we directly fund to the Board of Ed, we also provide in-kind services. This is a report that John generates for the state every fall. This was last year, and he'll do it this year. He doesn't expect any major changes. But as you can see, the total in in-kind services to the Board of Education is $15,382,000. Next. So this is the mill rate. We cut right to the chase, 25. The mill rate was 30.56%. The proposed mill rate is 32.93%. Up on the right, John is still convinced that the average home, you know, value is 235. We looked at that, and we're confident that that's what it is. And again, you may have a condo that's 100. You may have a smaller home that's, you know, 185. You may have a home that's a mansion, that's a million. But this is the average. So the taxes on a home in Enfield for $235,000 would be $5,417 per year. Next. I think this is, we've gotten a lot of good feedback that residents like to see, how does that break down? Where does that money go? So if we base it on a $235,000 household paying the 5417 in taxes, you can go through it and see where your money is spent. It's basically 50/50. 50% to Board of Ed, the other 50% is to the town. Public Works, 12%. Public Safety, 11%, and so forth. For a total of $5,417. Next. Water pollution control. As you know, this is an enterprise fund. It's a separate standalone department, and it's funded. It raises its money, and we expend the money from within their budget. It used to be we did it with the town and the general fund, and we don't do that anymore once we broke it out. And we've been over that ground several times. That was because the EPA and the state said we had to do it this way. So if you look at '25 to '26, we're basically stable. Our expenses, the cost of personnel, the operation, utilities, chemicals, capital, and you're going to have a breakdown of that next. And then the debt service, which is the money we pay when we spent about the $40 million to upgrade the facility, that's the debt service on it, $2 million a year. So we pay $9,909,000, about $10 million, for water pollution control. This, again, this is how we raise the money. This is the only method we have. So if you look to the right, you can see in '24, we still had the $39 that was a quarterly charge, so about 160 a year, every resident would get that as a base. Last year, the council, as you can see in '25, they zeroed it out. We went from, and you can look at the gallon, the ratio, and we're just going to touch on this because we're going to have a separate meeting in June to set these rates by the council as Water Pollution Control Authority. So you can see the rates in 2025, what they were. We put them in. I think they're going to be almost the same for 2026, but John is going to now concentrate this over the next couple of months to make sure. We made this change last year. We look in good shape. We actually have a little more revenue. But I want to remind you and the folks at home, when the council did this, you shifted the burden in a large way from individual homeowners to larger apartments and condos and businesses that were being taxed at a much lower rate, which really didn't represent their usage. Employee benefits, we're estimating, we've been told, 14% increase this year. And then pensions, Social Security, and Medicare as well, for an increase of almost $1 million. Contractual union increases, these are the negotiated contracts. John puts the money aside, and then when they're done, he absorbs the impact. But for our purposes, those salaries will increase a million for next year. Veterans exemption, we've talked about that as a special presentation. So that's added value to the veterans, but we lose 286 in revenue that we have to make up. The motor vehicle assessment changes. Anybody who's interested can go back to the last couple of meetings. We had presentations from the assessor to say, the state has changed their law. And as a result of that, when you see the 490, you see the 653, that's a loss of revenue to us that we have to make up in other taxation. And then, I included, lastly, added positions from last year. We've added an assistant town attorney that was vacant. We added one SRO to the program because that was rebalanced. We added, well, there's going to be an increase in the manager's salary. And we added a police captain last year. So that's about half a million dollars that we'll be carrying that we didn't have previously. The Board of Education increases, 4.3 million. And I'm sure the lion's share of theirs are the same as ours. I mean, they're impacted. We have the same insurance carriers, and they have to deal with wages as well. So the increase is 7.6 million. Next. All right. So we do the budget, which is the operating, to provide the services. These are, when we say capital improvement program, these are the investment in structures and/or equipment that we need to run those programs. I'm not going to go into great, great detail. They're similar to what we did last year, and you're going to be talking to DPW in their breakout session next week, and you can ask any specific questions. But you funded five Cruisers already. They had asked for 10, so we put in five. The portable radios, these are the two big ones I'm going to mention for the police and EMS, long past their life utility. Motorola won't even repair them. They send them back and say, try to find parts on eBay. We have to have communication. And the rest, you can see, are pretty, the normal for engineering services, miscellaneous school, boilers. And you can ask more questions about them at the breakout with DPW. Next slide. And these are the balance of them. We've been discussing as we've gone forward, replacing, you know, to make Alcorn the playscape safe, the gym floor replacement Alcorn. The total is 2.7 million. And the requests were higher than that. And again, at the breakout, we can provide you what the requests were. But from all the departments together, the requests for CIP are probably closer, I would say, John, of $5 million. Next. Now, remember, water pollution control is separate from the town. So just as the town invests in its infrastructure and equipment of 2.8 million, likewise, we're investing from the funds at DPW. 2.8 million for these pump station upgrades. John does that as a general, the first one, and then the specific ones you can see, and some other equipment that they need. And again, I have notes on this, but I'm not going to belabor it. You can ask if you have any specific questions of the director at his meeting next week. Next. And this is why we have to invest in water pollution control and the structure in town. We know it's an aging infrastructure. These are two emergencies we had over the last year or so, to Simon Road and Enfield Street. DPW did an amazing job. We had emergencies funding. The council was incredible with their support. But that was the cost of it. Enfield Street, $1 million. Simon Road, almost a half a million. Unforeseen expenses that we have to address during, you know, in between the budget. Next. So what we did is, you look at the fund balance. By our rules, the town requires that we have 9% of the operating budget reserved in the fund balance. And that would equate to be, we have to keep $15,400,000 in reserve. The balance as of June 30, $28,200,000. Planned usage, I told you about what we're doing for the capital improvement. In this budget, we would use 3.8 million. And over the years, we've used between that and $5 million on average. We don't increase it to use it for operating costs. We've never done that because you've got to make it up at some point. So the available fund balance will be $24 million after the budget, if you accept the proposed in that range. And what I want to show is, on the bottom left, this is why we have an emergency rainy day fund. The Board of V agreement last year, we had the emergency situation. You were able to assist and resolve that because we had money in the bank. If you look at Simon Road and Enfield Street, we didn't have to, during those emergencies, try to go and borrow the money. We had it in the bank. When we wanted to get an ambulance and police Cruisers online right away and not wait a year or two, we had money in the bank. So we spent $7.8 million. Over the last year, year and a half, I believe the BOE agreement may have been the end of '24 fiscally. But the idea is, you need money in the bank, and that's why we want it. We always have to have $15 million, and we'll have $24 million if you adopt the proposed budget or close to it. So we are in good fiscal shape, and a real note of gratitude goes to the council and also to the Finance Director. Next. These are the dates. Here we are, April 16. Next week, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 6 to 8. And we've already put it out on all our social media that we will have deliberation, and that they will be televised in the Skidical Room. Next week, if we need them the week after, we will have that available. We're going to go before planning and zoning under the charter. We have to submit the CIP for their review. The 28th, and that's the next item on your agenda, is to set the public hearing, which would be next Monday. Yes. 28th Monday. May 12, you have to adopt the budget by that deadline. And July 1, it would become effective. Next. Well, in conclusion, I would just like to say, it's the end of the presentation, but it's the beginning of the next chapter of Enfield. And I think what you've all done over the last two years, you put this town on the map as the gateway. You've invested in its people, in the programs. I think all of the slides that we showed, any Enfield residents should be, I think, proud. And I thank them for their support. And we couldn't do any of the projects, the River Street, the Enfield Square, the train. If the state and the developers didn't think that this council was unanimously support those, behind those projects, they wouldn't fund them. So I thank you. I thank the residents of Enfield.
Shut you up. I guess they were done with me.
Nothing to add? Add, Chris?
I don't think so. Thank you. And I turn it over to Steve Mochio, the Superintendent of Schools, for his budget presentation.
Welcome, Steve.
Okay. All right. Well.
And Charlotte.
Yep. Thanks for having us this evening to present for the public hearing, the Enfield Public Schools budget for 2025-26 fiscal year. Our budget that the Board of Ed passed on February 25, 2025, and sent to the council can be found, for those of you at home or here who want to may spend some quality time perusing it, can be found online on our website at enfieldschools.org. You click on the district information at the top of the webpage. Then you click on School Year 2025-26. At the bottom of that page, please click on Fiscal Year 25-26, BOE-approved budget presentation, for the presentation. And then you can click on the Fiscal Year 25-26, BOE-adopted budget for the budget breakdown. The various iterations that we had along the way are also shown on that page as well. And however, contrary to some rumors circulating out there, there is, in fact, one singular Board of Education budget, which we passed on February 25, 2025, and was sent to the council for their consideration. So we are here now to present it to all of you. So, all ready? So here at Enfield Public Schools, we believe that every child is unique, and the diversity and the diversity of our students is what makes Enfield Public Schools exceptional. To thrive and excel, all are welcomed, accepted, respected, and supported. Here's our mission statement. And to add to that, soon we'll be rolling out our vision of a graduate work. Basically, the principles that will drive the curriculum and teaching for what a pre-K through 12 student at Enfield Public Schools will embody. A sneak peek, three of those foundational blocks are lifelong learning, innovation and problem solving, and a mindset for success. I don't want to spoil the whole thing because it's been in the works for a while now. And there's going to be a more formal presentation coming up soon. But I couldn't resist giving a sneak peek because it's some really great, exciting stuff we've got going on. So here's some of our amazing accomplishments for the 23-24 school year. We've been closing gaps compared to the state average in academics. Especially awesome news is the grade 11 SAT scores are 1.8 points above the state average. And all grades combined, next generation science standards tests are 4.5 points above the state average. Due to Eagle Academy and programming like SOAR at JFK, as well as our other customized programs spanning various grades, our overall outplacement rate is 2.5% as compared to the state average of 4.7%. Which, if we didn't have these amazing programs, more students would be outplaced and special education costs would be much, much more. We have amazing students in athletics. 42% of them earned honors or high honors. I hope many of you got to go to our annual arts fest this past weekend. Our art students and music students are extremely talented. There were hundreds of pieces of art to view. And all were accompanied by live musical songs and instrumentals from our students as well. We are so far off the charts for the Arts Access Indicator, for the Accountability Index for the state standards, that our graph floats above the target line. So it's no surprise that the National Association of Music Merchants named us one of the best communities for music education. And who can forget Buzz Robotics? They attended their first world championship in Houston, Texas. If you ever get to go and see our students compete, please don't hesitate to go. It is a million times more exciting than watching BattleBots on TV. And our students have made some serious comebacks to win. And they always end up getting the Spirit Awards for their enthusiasm at the events and for their dedication to volunteering at the events, as well as helping other teams and showcasing their robots to the community. Notably, these are all accomplishments for the 23-24 school year, pre-last year's budget season. And while we have surely had some amazing ones this year, we are anticipating that some of these may be stalled or regressed due to our inability to provide some programming. Like at the high school level, 50 courses were not able to run. 39 were due to the inability to provide them. And 11 were due to no interest. And another major hit was that we had to get rid of the Career Center, which was top in the state. And that will negatively affect part of the College and Career Readiness Accountability Indicator. But nonetheless, our students are doing amazing things and they are for sure going places. So, next on to our budget priorities, the meat and potatoes of this. So we had more, four main priorities for this budget. Class sizes was first. Some were obviously very high. And once we were able to identify some additional savings through the year, we had to hire temporary aides for these classrooms at the K-5 level. There are just too many students in the class. If you had a chance to go into some of those classrooms, it was packed. And it would be hard to manage alone by anyone new or even anyone with 20-plus years under their belt, especially at that young of an age group. Also, we need to reduce class size in math at Enfield High as math tends to be an area of needed improvement for better student outcomes, as well as to be able to meet the mandated new graduation requirement of personal finance. And we need more science sections at JFK and also an integrated pre-K teacher to meet the needs of the growing number of pre-K special ed students. Specialized programs. We need to add more supports to our specialized in-district programs to keep them efficient and successful. Student staff and support. Students are our number-one priority. So to fill in the gaps in academic achievement, as well as social and behavioral needs, we simply need more supports. This has been a struggle this year. Obviously, extracurricular activities, we wanted to bring back, like middle school and freshman sports and after-school clubs and activities and a late bus for JFK. We'll get into this in more specific detailed rationale later, but this is what the focus of the budget is. So budget assumptions. The budget has the following assumptions, which in my day job, we say that things are very fluid. Some of these changes seemingly daily and most are legislatively controlled by the state, as you'll see in a minute. So number one, costs associated with student needs will continue to rise. Really, what in the economy hasn't risen lately? Two, ECS, which is the Educational Cost Share Grant. Funding from the state will remain the same due to Enfield being an alliance district and we're held harmless. An important side note here, though, is at the state level, just recently moving its way through the budget process, the Appropriations Committee made an amendment to the budget proposal, which basically says that ECS funding is to remain with a hold harmless in place for those districts scheduled to lose dollars, which we have been identified as previously. Excess cost reimbursement, that's special education dollars, is to be increased to 124 million in year one and in year two of the biennial, which is resulting in it being fully funded. They're going to change, maybe. Alliance districts would be renamed Priority Districts. And there would be only 15. And guess what? Enfield isn't in that bucket. And also, these former alliance districts will continue to be funded the same, but all the dollars will be folded into ECS. Thus, there's no impact to the town of Enfield because we've been receiving the Hold Harmless ECS allotment every year. That amendment passed with bipartisan support, 45 to 6. And obviously, all of this can change as the bill moves to the House and the Senate. So more to come, and we watch and we wait. Number three. Unfunded mandates will continue to be legislatively mandated. That's the state of Connecticut's broken record statement. You absolutely have to provide this. And we definitely won't give you any money to do it. Four, we'll continue to utilize grant funding to support staffing and program needs of the district. Later slides will show funding sources of grant income. And if you watched our presentation on grant funding and how it works, this should be a reinforcement of that information. Five, Magnet and VoAG school tuition will remain at 58% funded. Well, just this morning, I received an email from the executive director of CREC requesting us all to advocate to the state to increase the CREC Magnet school funding by 13.4 million this year and then 20.2 million for '27. He said, in the absence of that full funding, the 58% tuition would be eliminated. And then obviously, that would increase the cost to us. And as you'll see in later slides, the impact that could have regarding our number of students attending those schools. And finally, excess cost grant reimbursement from the state. It was on a PowerPoint presentation from the commissioner that Enfield was mandated at 91%. We obviously got nowhere near that. So we budgeted for only 64% for fiscal year '26. But as I said before, maybe there's hope on the horizon for that to increase. But really, basically, all of these assumptions come down to state legislative votes. And they are all assumptions, and they can change at any time. All right, so budget history. This chart shows the development of our budget. Keep in mind, even though it states this started officially in October, we really have been working all year since last budget. And Mr. Macchio just joined us as the new superintendent on September 30th. And he jumped right in analyzing all of this, even a couple months prior to him, his official start date. This was a massive lift by him and many people. Since everything was rolled back and drilled down, no stone was left unturned during this whole process and the progression of the budget. We have a calendar that we followed for the budget progression. And throughout October to December, departments and each separate school budgets were developed and presented to the cabinet. And then the cabinet and Mr. Macchio take all of that presented information and develop the superintendent's proposed budget. It was first presented to the Board of Ed on January 28th. And at that time, the request was 5.86%. Then, as more fluid information came in and further drilling down into each object code occurred, we had another update on February 11th and another presentation. At that point, it was a 5.24% increase. And prepurchasing would change that to 3.9. Then we had a board workshop to further review the budget as some more savings were being identified. And if you remember, we say this all the time. It's like a broken record. It's backwards that the way the budgeting is done because we're still getting information in daily about legislative changes, students coming in another district with IEPs, and not even the town's budget is even remotely done in February. There's just so many unknowns. So, in that public workshop we had, it was not just Board of Ed members sitting there adding things woolly-nilly however they wanted to do it. All of the cabinet members were there, along with Mr. Macchio and all of the Board of Ed, when we decided to reinvest newly identified savings from things like insurance numbers coming down and such. We did so in a very thoughtful and deliberate manner, using tiers of additional positions. It wasn't an à la carte menu, pick what you want. It was, this is the next tiered magnitude of necessity identified by all of the meetings that had previously occurred back in October through January with staff. The board budget's final presentation and vote occurred on February 25th, which included reinvesting identified savings and included three tiers from the workshop. You'll see the rationale of these tiers in a bit. And the request is 5.57%. So, obviously, the overall recommendation is 5.57% increase. The overall assumption is that this also includes that there is $650,000 in one-time prepayment purchases, one of which we anticipate being able to pay back a portion of the MOU with the town from last year's shortfall early. And also includes that we can have some carryover for the non-lapsing, or as you like to call it, contingency fund. So the 5.57% increase provides the funds necessary for the school system shall the positions be fulfilled. All right, Steve. Budget drivers.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll be your color man this evening, providing some of the additional backup. So in terms of budget drivers, what you'll notice here, and I think it should be of no surprise that the Board of Education budget is largely based on salaries and benefits. So when you look at our ask of $81.7 million for the budget, 97.26% of that is based off of these 10 drivers that you see. 82.7% of our overall budget is all people. You know, different than many other areas and many other types of budgets. You know, we're not building, you know, objects or things like that. We need people to be able to be in front of students so that they can educate them, they can support them, and they can provide them all of the additional supports and necessities for them. So a lot of the budget is based off of the salaries and benefits. The rest of the budget, 2.74%, if you really want, out of the 81.7 million, that's right around $2.2 million. So other than what you have in these 10 drivers here, it's really only about $2.2 million. I will tell you that that $2.2 million is made up of 39 different object codes. Those 39 object codes are broken down into 200 individual accounts. Charlotte did mention the fact that we did an extremely deep dive on this budget. We looked at every account line, and there were over 500 account lines that make up our Board of Education budget. So it was a daunting task. I do want to, you know, I look over and I see Lorena Sisneros, my business manager, sitting over there. You know, I joke with her every day that we are now best friends because we spend a lot of time together. Because there's really, truly, there's not a single day that we're not talking about something related to the budget. Transportation. We successfully negotiated a new contract with Smith Bus Company, which is nice because I believe they've been the bus company here in Enfield for
Perpetuity?
A long time. So we were able to, next year will be year one of a five-year contract going in with Smith Bus. We will be working with them to work on a lot of efficiencies. I see a lot of additional buses that I don't think we actually need. So we're going to be taking over some of the routing of those buses and really bringing it to the 21st century in terms of using software to be creating our bus routes. Outplacements. Those, that is the tuition that we pay for our special education students to attend private settings. In the future, as the last time I think I presented to you, we talked about, you know, Eagle Academy and the Pre-Referendum Committee and all of those types of things. We may be able to reduce our number of outplacements. I will say publicly with 100% certainty that we will never immediately, or completely remove outplacements. There will always be a need for us to likely outplace a student, you know, to a different setting. But I do believe that we may be potentially able to reduce it. Technology supplies. Mr. Bronson stole my thunder. He already showed you the number that was up there. The reason that this is a driver, one of the top 10 drivers, is because of the Board of Education contribution that we send back to the town of Enfield. And that's for the IT department. It's all their hardware. They're responsible for all of our hardware, our software. It comes to us. But the hardware and the infrastructure, you know, the wireless routers and all that type of information, that's all worked through Paul Russell and his group in IT. So he comes up with a dollar amount, sends it over to Kerry Wiley, and we put it into the budget and send the money back in. Technology services, on the other hand, that's our software. That's the different pieces of software that we utilize within the school system. Our new reading program this year would be one of the major items that we included within that. So that would all fall into this type of program. Tuition is our Vo-Tec and our AGSI. Tuition, our Magnet School tuition, that's the 58% that you just heard that we used as an assumption. So this year was the first year that it was capped at 58% of what it was the year before. We have been told that it will be committed moving forward. Pending legislative change. You know, things happen in legislature and things change. We'll react to it as it comes. But as of right now, in our budget is the statute of 58% of our VoAG and our AGSI program for our Magnet Schools. Professional services, those are our contracted services. Kelly Services is the sub-company that we utilize. Our nursing services, in terms of if we need additional nurses. I will tell you that we're actually looking at making adjustments in that as well because we can actually bring on board nurses that are able to sub when they're available. And it would actually cost us less money than going through a service contract. So we're trying to sort of shift over in that nature. But right now, we still have the need for both. Teachers mentors. If you are a new teacher in the district and you will have a veteran teacher who's matched up with you, who has gone through some specific training. So we have some additional stipends and things like that. And the last item in terms of the non-student is, for all of you who have been over to Stowe, those portables in the back-left corner, that's still in our budget. And I want to say it's going to be in there for a few more years. And lastly is the liability insurance. And that's just the Board of Ed portion. We have a shared liability insurance with the town. Mr. Wilcox lets us know what the liability insurance should potentially be budgeted for. And are we going to listen to him? Or that's the number that we're going to put in there. So those are your overall 10 drivers in the budget. And again, like I said, 97.26% of the overall budget is sitting on the screen.
So I just wanted to touch quickly on student enrollment. It's based on October 1st student data numbers. Currently, we have 4,696 students in our schools here. And we have 294 students that are Enfield students going out to Tech, VoAG, Magnet, and Special Education outplacements, all of which we still have to pay for, for a total of 4,990 students. The graph below shows enrollment over the last 10 years. And since this was an important point last year, and obviously is still a very important point this year, 47.4% of our students are free and reduced lunch. 21.7% of our students are special education, including those outplaced. If you add in the Magnet School students that have IEPs that we're still responsible for, the total becomes 22.3% of our students of IEPs or special needs. Another important fact is from August 29th, '24 to April now, 88 special education students with current IEPs enrolled into our district. And 41 moved out. So that is still a net gain of plus 47 special education students. 13 of those were just in March. Over the same time period, August to April, already in-district students, 89 additional students have been identified for special education so far this year. So, next we have the FTE report. For those of you who don't like acronyms, FTE is full-time equivalent. So this shows our current staff levels at the top, then what's requested in the budget, and then what it would be overall for the next year. A lot of times, people will just go to the automatic, you know, knee-jerk statement. The system's too top-heavy and you have too many admin. Well, we have 44 admin in our district. And really, it's 42 because the two over at the Adult Education and Alternative Education are actually supervisory positions. We just classify them in the bucket of administrator. They work under Mr. Longy. And actually, all of the employees at the Adult Ed and Alternative Ed programs are part-time and hourly. So, in a district of 4,696 students, there are 42 really. And you could say 41 since nutrition's like basically on its own island. And that, so that leaves 114.5 students per administrator. I would, in my opinion, not consider that type of. And just for terminology sake, certified staff are those that are required to hold a certificate through the state of Connecticut, like teachers and librarians. Non-certified staff is staff that are not licensed educationally through the state, like paras, secretaries, tutors, and nurses. Non-union employees are not part of a specific bargaining unit, like lunch, aides, and behavior techs.
I just, just before we switch off of this slide, there was a significant amount of work that was done as we built this budget because, different than previous years, and I believe you should have a copy of the full budget with complete object breakdown. I believe you should have a copy of the full budget with complete object breakdown, when we built the budget, we built it on a person-by-person basis. So we based it off of the eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-two-five FTE that we have in the district, and then we added in the thirty-three-point-nine, and we have to make a determination about, well, there's salaries for those that are within the bargaining units, there's no determination to be made, you follow their contract. For the non-union folks, obviously, it's what percent increase they would or would not be receiving, and then we have to factor in the benefit costs for each of those employees. So a lot of work, and I wanted to make sure we showed on the right-hand side here how much of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-point-one-five come out of Board of Education funding, and how much comes out of grant funding. There will be a slide coming up in the future which shows you how much grant funding we actually bring in. With that, since I was the new guy here, I did need to ask the question of, well, where have we been in comparison to previous years? So you have a graph here in front of you which shows the FTE. Now, these are as of September. Do, 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 do. Cynthia, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to look at you in the same way anymore. I now have a nickname. All right. That's great. Totally lost track there. So these are as of September because throughout the year, you have folks that leave and you have folks that are being hired, so your payroll, we base it off of the payrolls that are run. So at the beginning of the year in September, we based it off of that first payroll. So each of these numbers is based off of the first payroll of the year. Really, what you see here is there are some increases related to support staff as you went up from the nine-twenty-three in eighteen nineteen to seven, to nine-seventy-three, and then you had the drop from nine-seventy-three down to eight-ninety as we dug in and we looked at that. Really, I mean, I hope we never have to go through it again, that's COVID. If you remember, in twenty-twenty-one, that year of education was the hybrid year. That was the year of half your kids went on Mondays and Tuesdays, and half of your kids went on Thursday and Friday, and nobody came in the building on Wednesdays. When you have half a building of kids, you don't have as much need for support staff. So there's a lot of those that dropped there was the support staff. Twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-three, twenty-four, there was increases in staffing. That is when all of the art bester dollars were here. That was also where the clear need have, has surfaced in terms of sort of the post-COVID need from students. Right now, after last year's budget process that the town went through, we're down to eight-hundred-and-twenty-three FTE. Now, that eight-hundred-and-twenty-three, I didn't go back prior to seventeen, eighteen, but really, we're talking about an amount of FTE that really, it's lower than even when you had Enfield High School and Fermi both open at the same time. And I, my guess is, and I don't know this, is that one of the consolidation reasons for that is there's less sharing of staff across multiple buildings, and there's a potential reduction of staff. But we are well below what those FTEs were. Next year, we're asking for eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven, so again, small bump up, please note, still nowhere even near the two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
All right, so now we're gonna dig deeper into priorities. Priority one, class sizes. Like I said before, this is a priority for a reason. Class sizes are large, and we need to be able to serve our students for better outcomes. So I'm gonna hand this one off to Steve so he can get a go with the rationale for these positions.
So I apologize to the folks in the audience that if this is a little small, but this is all gonna be posted on our website as well. And really, a lot of these are items that have been posted before and have been included as, as part of our presentations. So for priority one, we have a number of different staff, and what I did, because we go through all of these iterations of our budget, because we started off in January and then we had a change in February, and then we had another change in February, I wanted to show you how these came about along the way. So you can see, we started off with the initial presentation. We're looking at an integrated pre-K teacher. I mean, I don't, I don't need to read all of the rationale here for you. But basically, we have an increased enrollment and an increased demand in terms of our pre-K program. That integrated pre-K teacher will bring us up to six-and-a-half pre-K teachers. One of our teachers does half of the day in integrated pre-K and the other half of the day in Head Start, so we'll have thirteen sections available for integrated pre-K. You could see in terms of the grade-two at Memorial, grade-four at Crandall, grade-five at Crandall, grade-five at Parkman, let's just look at those. I think everybody has heard throughout the year the size of the classes. So as you project forward the classes to the following year, we first started by, could we shift people within our buildings to different grade levels? And then this, these were the needs in order to bring all of the class sizes down. I think I, what I had stated is that I was committed to trying to get all of them at or below twenty-five. So you can see the numbers here reduces the average class size from two. So I'm not hiding everything, this is, again, these are projections, so can change depending on if we have people move in or out of the district. The, at JFK, there's a grade-six science teacher. I will say, science at JFK in sixth grade is the only subject area that does not have four teachers. All other subject areas, core subject areas have four teachers, so this would bring them up to a fourth teacher. And really, that is gonna, A, maintain class size, but more importantly, we're gonna be able to get back into some of the teaming work that happens at grade-six. Not gonna be able to do that across all of the grade levels there, but we're at least starting in one location. We think it's pertinent to start at the youngest levels as they work their way up through. When we got to February eleventh, I made the commitment to add an additional math teacher at the high school, and really, that comes down to our algebra class sizes, that's our ninth-grade class typically at the high school. We're far too large, twenty-five or above in a class, so this is to help try to reduce the class sizes. The additional sections will also be able to allow us to provide personal, now, this is the world's longest title of a class, but this is exactly the way it comes out of the state legislature, so we're gonna go with it, personal financial management and financial literacy. So that's a new mandate that came down for us to be able to provide. Now, the nice thing about that is you can take that class and you can meet your math elective, or you can meet your math graduation requirement. So it could be one of your years of your graduation requirement for math. We go on to February twenty-fifth, and these four items here are straight off of the tiers that were put together. We had a kindergarten teacher at Barnard, one at Memorial. Both of those are trying to bring our kindergarten classes down to around twenty. The grade-four teacher at Crandall is trying to bring that average class size, it's the same grade level from above, so now, instead of having twenty-five-point-eight, now we truly are underneath twenty-five. I will say that if that is able to stay in, and that was one of the later tiers, all of our K-through-five classes would all be right around that twenty-two mark. So we would be, except for, well, I know there's one grade level at one specific school, so I'm not gonna go into that, but that was actually addressed in tier four, but was not included as part of the budget. Lastly, at the high school, there was an additional PE in teen leadership, that's an elective course, and really, that's about us being able to give extra flexibility within the building, so additional PE classes. That teen leadership course, when I met with it, when I meet with the kids over there, they brag about that course. That is an outstanding course to get them ready for sort of the next steps and really being community leaders. And then lastly is, right now, if you're a student in Eagle Academy, and we try to fit PE in, it has to be provided by the special education teachers over at Eagle Academy. So this would actually allow us to be able to provide a couple sections of PE from a PE teacher for the Eagle Academy kids. So we would work that portion out. Moving on to priority two.
Specialized programs. So we need to support the various specialized in-district programs through the addition of social workers, case managers, and specialized positions. So before Steve goes into the rationale, I just really wanted to stress that we went to tier three specifically on this priority due to the needs at JFK and Enfield High, specifically their SOAR programs over there. This will prevent multiple outplacements that we anticipate since we're at capacity with this, so the cost to keep our kids here is obviously much less than an outplacement. And then to further think ahead, those are positions that we're going to need anyways if we expand Eagle Academy with the referendum coming up.
All right, so back to me. So again, same process here, broken down by the date in which it was presented to the Board of Education. And really, what I will say is, Charlotte already say it, said it, so SOAR stands for Successful Outcomes for Achievement and Responsibility, and right now, yeah, we have an acronym for everything in education, by the way. Yeah, no, we have something for everything. But they're, they're doing as well as they possibly can maintaining the numbers of students that we have. We are at capacity. If we don't begin to expand these particular programs, we will be looking at additional outplacements. I can tell you that there have been two or three outplacements this year, some out of this program, another one maybe out of the Eagle Academy. Those were, as I explained to the Board of Ed, bless you. Those were all at no cost to the Board of Education and at no cost to the town. So depending on where the student comes from, it always goes back to the LEA, the original town. So we made a determination that we could no longer service that student here in town, so they were outplaced, we found a location for them, and then that sending town, who sends the student to us, now pays for that student to go to a private outplacement. So there wasn't no additional charge to us. However, the behavior tech at JFK, again, you're gonna hear a lot about SOAR as we go through the next few here, but we're looking at expanding the program. Social workers, trying to provide a dedicated social worker for the high school SOAR program, a dedicated social worker only with JFK in their SOAR program, and a dedicated social worker that doesn't have to be shared across Eagle Academy. These are our most needy students in times, in terms of emotional regularity and behavioral issues, so having somebody there full-time to be able to do that group work, to be able to be at the ready at any moment, is vital. Special education teacher over at Crandall, that's for the ECP program. That is to expand the current program. We have two classrooms currently over at Crandall, we'd be looking at expanding it to three, and really, that's to help try to spread out the numbers of students that we have. Obviously, when you have your most difficult students, trying to put more and more of them into one classroom is not a benefit to them. Teachers have been phenomenal in terms of making things work right now, but I will say that with the lack of additional support staff, I would say this spring, we have really begun to see the effects of the lack of support staff. April break could not have occurred at a better time for a lot of them. Stowe, specialized instructional assistant, that is, we have one little kiddo, kiddo over there who has a very specific need. This is an IEP-driven, we must provide, so we're out attempting to hire for that person now. I didn't add anything additional in terms of February eleven, but then, out of the tiers, you can see that we wanted to add an additional SOAR classroom at JFK and at the high school. We wanted to, whenever you put in one of those classrooms, you need to make sure they have proper supports with them, so that's why the behavior techs are there. And then we wanted to add an additional, or two additional, behavior techs over at Barnard, Barnard houses, all except for two of our DLP classrooms. We have two of those classrooms at Enfield Street, and then the rest are over at Barnard, and so he has the majority of the need. The asterisks, you can sort of see at the bottom in terms of some further explanation. I know the Board of Education receives on a
Regular basis?
Multi-regular basis per week, notification of a protective custody or an emergency call that has to go to one of the schools for some of our kiddos that have to be sent to the hospital for a variety of different issues, they're all sort of listed there. It's really our belief and our hope that with some additional support and assistance for the teacher and for that classroom, that we would not be needing to put as much burden onto the emergency system. Next priority.
Priority three, still keeping kids' focus, student and staff support, increased support services to address the label student need and identified gaps in academic, behavioral, and social-emotional development. So especially for things like two additional English teaching speakers of other languages. We have a lot of kids in our district that do not, that English is not their first language. An additional staff to assist with credit recovery at Enfield High School, which is a major thing for those kids so that they can graduate, and other things like math interventions at JFK and K-5 because math is still a sticking point for our district.
Just to add on to that, one of the items up here was increased wage, and that's the hourly rate for, to retain and attract our behavioral technicians. I didn't just arbitrarily come up with an increase in the terms of the dollars. We did a lot of research in terms of surrounding towns, surrounding areas, similar economic areas, in terms of what the appropriate hourly rate would be. We're gonna still fall a couple dollars per hour, if not, you know, three or four dollars per hour, depending on some of them, but we're looking at raising that rate from twenty-six and a half dollars per hour to twenty-eight dollars per hour for those behavior techs. So we're hopeful that that's going to bring us closer to the market rate. It's always incredibly difficult to compare yourselves to some of the more affluent communities that can go ahead and skyrocket those rates up to like thirty-five dollars an hour, we're just, that's not gonna happen, so we wanted to be reasonable with that. And then I will say that those two additional teachers, teaching, teachers that teach English to speakers of other languages, if you go back to that enrollment slide, out of the four-thousand-seven-hundred, I'm just gonna round it for everybody, out of those four-thousand-seven-hundred kids, four-point-four percent of them are gonna fall under this, and more and more are moving in on a daily basis. So there is a real need for that area. In terms of everything put all together for this rationale, for this priority, you have a number of academic tutors, so these are academic tutors. These folks are part-time, call it a, call it a half-day, and they provide academic assistance to small groups of kids that are struggling in the classroom, so they can push in and provide that additional assistance. We're looking at a half a person in each of the elementary schools, so it'd be the three primary and the three elementary schools. District-wide, the T, the first TSAL teacher shows up on the January twenty-eighth. That brings us to, we have six in district, that would bring us to seven TSAL teachers. We did add an additional security monitor, that's for our joint operations center, that's a halftime position. He has a number of part-time employees that work in the operations center. This would allow us to be able to have three folks working at all time, which really, the major importance there is for two to constantly be watching, they pretty much concentrate on the high school. If we're able to add a third in at all times, now we can have two watching the high school and one watching over JFK, as well as all the other surveillance cameras that are in existence, but the goal there is to try to have three people onboard at all times. On the eleventh, I added in a credit recovery teacher. We have one credit recovery teacher, that's zero-point-four, we're looking at a second. Really, that's about just trying to support the kids in terms of obtaining credits. If they fail a class or they need assistance, it's a different, you know, a different way of learning because it's all online, and we're really looking at trying to increase the four-year graduation rate and not have kids falling behind and constantly trying to take multiple extra classes to catch back up should they fall behind. Twenty-fifth, as part of the tiers, we had a request for a halftime school nurse at Crandall. As you, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at going from two of those ECP classrooms up to three classrooms. This additional support is for a part-time, and that's gonna meet the needs of the building as well as that additional ECP class. A speech-language pathologist assistant, and really, this goes directly to our integrated pre-K. The numbers of students that are coming in with speech needs, you know, we only have the two-and-a-half speech and language pathologists. There's an increasing need, rather than putting in for an additional speech-language pathologist, they thought if they had a person who could work directly with them as an assistant, they'd be able to provide some of the supports rather than a full-time speech-language pathologist. Just another way of tackling a problem. JFK, math interventionists, we have two of them that are listed there, and these come out of different tiers. out of different tiers. One, I believe, was in tier one, and the other one was in tier three. Don't quote me on that. But this is really an increase, we have one, one math interventionist at JFK for approximately 1,000 students. So this would bring us up to three. We started with two, and then we thought three, and the reason for three is now you have one math interventionist for each grade level. So you'd be able to have one dedicated to six, one to seven, and one to eight. Really, nothing else to be said for that. K-5 math interventionist, so we have 10 math interventionists that are spread around the six schools, primary and elementary. This would provide an additional, so that would bring it up to 11. Again, they're spread out throughout the schools, about 1,900 students total when you look at those six schools. You know, why do we, why would we have 11 for 1,900, and, you know, we're asking for three in the other one? Research would tell you, if we can catch the kids when they're younger, if we can get the interventions and supports for them, so that the gap isn't there, you know, before second or third grade, then the likelihood of them having to go along further and potentially need special education services or things like that is greatly reduced. So we're trying to catch them at an earlier age. Right now, the interventionists are split, like I said, across all the buildings. This allows us to sort of dedicate specific interventionists to specific areas. Michelle Middleton, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction oversees that, and so she would work at where's the greatest need, and she would allocate them appropriately to that. And then the second T-Sol teacher is the last person there. I think we've covered the T-Sol. Back to you, Charlotte.
Oh, this is you.
Back to me, Steve. Extracurricular activities, multi-year approach for us to try to reinstate all middle school and freshman-level sports teams. Middle school sports is fully in the budget next year. It is broken up in two ways. There's $25,000 out of the Board of Education funding within the budget, and there's $75,000 that came from the Save Our Sports program. It's put in as a revenue line. If you have the object breakdown, the really, the really small, fine print document that goes to all 500 accounts, you'll see it in there as a $75,000 sort of negative. The plan is, rather than asking to put all 100,000 back in in another year, is to slowly, incrementally get it to the point where the full amount is in the Board of Education budget. So what I was looking at doing is, next year, 25,000 from the Board of Ed. The following year, we would go 50,000 from the Board of Ed, Save Our Sports would provide the other 50,000. The year after that, 75,000 would go from the Board of Ed, 25,000 would come from Save Our Sports. Had a bunch of different conversations and emails back and forth. Those guys are phenomenal in terms of their fundraising efforts. They fully anticipate being able to cover that amount of money over those years. They've already sent us the check for $100,000 for next year. It's been deposited into the district activity account. So what Mrs. Narros will need to do is just basically take it out, and then she uses that as the offset for the budget, 75,000 worth. 25,000 stays in. They will then provide me another check next year, where we will put into that same account. Fully fund all club and activity stipends district-wide, so, you know, I didn't make any decisions about what activities or what clubs kids would be interested in, which one should run or not run. We're going to run them all, because the more we can keep our kids engaged in school and after school, the better performance we will be able to have with them during the school day. And lastly, I'm adding back in a bus run at JFK, a late bus run at JFK. There is no late bus, so if you don't have transportation, if your parents can't get there at the end of the day, or for extra help or extra support, you're out of luck. So no, that had to go back in. That was really part of our contract negotiations when we went through Smith Bus Company. Again, the one thing I will say is, I'm actually looking at the same for the high school. I'd like to be able to put in a late bus run at least two days per week at the high school. That will largely depend on the efficiencies that we identify when we redo the routes. We've taken a number of buses offline for next year that we know automatically we can do. As we run through the software, if I can get more buses offline, I'm going to put the late bus run in place for the high school. That brings us to grants and revenue. A lot longer than 24 minutes, huh, Mr. Bronson?
I'm going to put this a little more long-winded.
I'll know next time, I'll just record it.
Good idea.
The FTE, the FTE slide, I want to, I want to bring you right back to that FTE slide. Here's all of our grants and our revenue. We had just under $3 million brought into the district in terms of grants for 24, 25. All of those grants, as I mentioned before, 85.45 of our staff are paid for from, directly from those grants. The sort of, the green box down at the bottom, that's really the number it takes, the dollar amount it takes to run the district. The districts run, A, off of appropriation from the town of Enfield, B, off of grant funding, and then C, off of revenue amounts. So again, different this year. You have, in my humble opinion, the most detailed breakdown budget you've received in a number of years. If you want to know exactly where the revenue's coming from next year, look at all the red lines. There's 17 of them. We, you know, it's based on, I even put in things like pre-K tuition. So if we charge kids, they come to pre-K, what's our anticipated amount that we're bringing in from that? I've added into the Board of Education summary every month that they receive. If we said we were going to bring in 100,000, where do we stand with 100,000? Are we at 25, are we at 50, are we at 85? Are we going to hit our indicators? So really, the total expense is just shy of 85 million. This is something that we will absolutely continue to monitor. I have significant, significant concerns about what I'm hearing out of Washington with Head Start funding. Do a quick Google search for those of you who haven't, and you'll know what I'm talking about. That is a huge impact on our families here in this town. If we don't receive the funding for Head Start, Head Start goes away. Head Start is fully funded through that. You don't take any portion of it. I would have to completely shut down that program. So that would be an incredible, an incredible void for some of the families here. So we will see what happens with that, we'll keep our eyes on it. And then you have a couple of bullets over there on the right. Obviously, federal and state grants are used to enhance our resources. The open choice program seems to come up as a question at times about how much does it cost to educate the kids, and are they costing the town more? We receive almost a million dollars as part of the open choice program. And by the way, if one of those students is unable to be successful here, and I have to outplace them, Hartford picks up the tab, not Enfield. So there's a bunch of information there. I will suggest you go online and look at, for everybody here, that is a live hyperlink to a Q&amp;A document, just trying to educate everyone about what that program is, and how it comes about, and how funding occurs. So do not hesitate to click on that link, and then revenue obviously is collected from the district. Charlotte, this one's back to you.
Yeah. All right, so key takeaways. This budget is all about our priorities. We're going to begin to rebuild loss programming and fix class sizes. Our student success is number one for us. Keeping our students as the focus, we will also reinstate student-identified extracurricular opportunities, all while continuing to meet mandated and legal requirements like social work, special education, and T-Sol. Finally, Steve said it before, but I'm going to say it again, we work tirelessly to improve the clarity and transparency of funding sources and anticipated expenditures, seen clearly in the budget breakdown provided to you, as well as online, all the way through each object code. I mean, really, we've opened the doors and pulled back all the curtains. It probably is the most transparent budget that we ever had in the last 10 years. So I hope that the presentation Mr. Macio and myself have given today, along with the budget breakdown that you can now access online, and you probably have those binders on your desk over there, we hope that it's been helpful in showing you exactly what comes in, how every dollar is spent, and what we need, and exactly why we need it. The 5.57 puts us back on the road to success and brings back key priorities to ensure that we are there for Enfield students, every child, every day. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add, for the benefit of the folks at home, since Mr. Macio came onboard and even before with Mr. Longy, we started and initiated leadership meetings between he, my office, Charlotte, yourself, and others, so that we could dig into this and not wait to the last minute to do the budget. So I commend them for that. Steve and I joke, but he is correct, and so is Charlotte. This is the most transparent, open budget that I've seen in my years here. I thank him for it, and it's better to sit here for two hours or three hours and really know what's going on than have a short presentation and wonder. So I commend them both, and I thank them for their partnership, and I thank that of the council. And together, I think we've come up with a budget that addresses the needs of all of our residents, from seniors and perhaps the later part of life, to the young people in the beginning of life, and all those in between. So we're, I think, very proud of it, and thank you.
I'd like to thank you both. I do agree, it is probably the most detailed budget that I've ever seen, and that's what we asked for several years ago. So Charlotte, thank you. Steve, thank you for following through with it. Just one thing I want to clear up on this slide is, you have, for total expense, $84,968, but that is not including the count, the town's contributions that we pick up. School security, IT, stuff like that, which comes out to another $15,382,000, which gives a total cost for education in Enfield at $100,351,104. I just, because people are going to take the number, they're going to divide it by the students, say we're underfunding, so I just want a true reflection of what the cost is. Would you agree with this?
Yeah, I would, and that's a great point, and I appreciate you for bringing that up, because I will say, out of all the districts I've ever worked in, and what am I up to? I don't know, between teaching and administration and all that, this is the first district I've ever worked in where literally the town takes on so much, in terms of buildings and grounds and things of that nature and facilities. So, right, there, typically, I think, what you would find from a Board of Education town standpoint, is it usually goes about 2/3 of Board of Ed and 1/3 town. By you taking on as much as you do, you've brought that to about 50/50. So yeah, 100%, you're accurate.
And again, phenomenal. Thank you, Charlotte, because I know you, we talked about it last year, and you pulled it off. Great job. Thank you. Anybody else before we go to the public? Okay, seeing none. So, next, it's going to be comments from members of the public for the first round. The following notice, a public hearing was published in the Hartford Courant on Tuesday, April 22, 2025. Town of Enfield Legal Notice. Notice is hereby given that the town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing on the proposed annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. The public hearing shall be Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. The order of business for the 2025-2026 budget hearing shall be arranged as follows. Presentation of the town manager's budget. The superintendent of school highlights the Board of Education budget, and then comments from members of the public for the first time. Each speaker is requested to register with the town clerk his or her name and address, and that no speaker shall be allowed to speak for more than five minutes each successive time. The speaker's name is called, each successive time the speaker's name is called. Budget information may be found at www-enfieldct.gov, on the Finance Department webpage, or in the office of the town clerk, dated the 17th day of April, 2025, by Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. And for clarification, the budget, we found, I actually found, due to comments all over the internet, that nobody could find the budget. I contacted Mr. Bronson and Mr. Belinda on Saturday, and they were able to get ahold of the Finance Director, and it was supposed to be posted Friday for everyone. The town apologizes, but we took care of it Saturday, so the budget was put up Saturday, or it was sent out to me. I posted it on Facebook, and it was put on the website this morning at the town. So I apologize for that. So first, we're going to start off with Tom Cremona.
Thank you for listening. I didn't expect to go first, that's a tough chair to be in. But I have a couple comments, and we'll see where this goes.
Can we just have name and address, Tom?
Tom Cremona, C-R-E-M-O-N-A, 19 Tyler Road.
And make sure your mic is on. There you go, just leave it on, you don't need to press stop.
Sorry, thank you. Okay. Is that better? Okay. So a couple things first, just to get things started. Over the last couple of years, I've gotten more involved with the town than I ever had been before. And I wanted to say to each of you, thank you, because I started to recognize some things pretty early on. The amount of time of effort that this council puts in, and including you folks over here, truly remarkable. And honestly, I didn't know until pretty recently that you don't get paid a penny. I think some of you know that I was also on the Charter Review Commission, so I'm one of the louder voices that looks like it's going to keep it that way for a little while longer. So you're welcome for that. But again, thank you for your time. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I've heard many of you say how important it is for you to hear from the town residents and from the public. And I've seen that impact how you think and what you decide. And I think that's really remarkable, so I wanted to say thank you for that as well. So there's a couple general comments. A little bit more about me. I've lived in Enfield my whole life. My father and his father lived in Thompsonville, right over on Lafayette Street, so our roots run deep. I graduated from Fermi, I had two kids graduate from Fermi. My grandkids do not go to school here, because they live in a different town. I'm retired, and my wife is retired. So I'm in one of those categories of people who are on fixed income. My roots are deep, and I guess I wanted to start by saying that I know when you get into deliberations, you talk about me. Not about me, but about the group that I belong to. I hear you say frequently, retirees on fixed income can't afford another dollar of tax. Well, I guess I'm here to say that, please don't do that, because we're not all one group. We are very different. We're just like everybody else. Retirees are not one group. And one of the things that I take really personally is I support education in the town. I support, I support police in town. I support Public Works in town. I support the town. And I think you're hearing, even in some of the presentations, how difficult the time we're living in. And so the reality is, thinking that there's not going to be an increase in taxes in the environment we're living in, is, I think, almost impossible to actually realize. So as you begin your deliberations, I hope you remember that I exist, and that the peer group that I'm part of exists, and that we may consider saying, because it's our town, and because we support our town, we'll find a way to pay more if we have to. Because I'll tell you what I've done so far. You know, I listened to every presentation, and the amount of information is overwhelming. It really is overwhelming. But I heard everything. And as best as I could, I did take a look and say, well, oh, again, a quick comment, I think it was Friday night, I think it was your last meeting. At the end of the meeting, Mayor Nelson did something where he said, look, I'm not asking you to vote, I just want to see by a show of hands, where are we leaning? And I know you took some heat for that, and I don't understand why. Because I will tell you, as a resident, I wasn't looking for you to commit either. I didn't expect that. I didn't expect that. But for me to have the weekend, to be able to know where you're leaning, was very powerful. Because I recognize that, right now, I know you're leaning towards saying, "This is too high." I know that's what you're thinking. I'm not saying that's where you're going to end up, but it was clear that that's what you're thinking. So as I looked at things over the weekend, it was important and powerful for me to know that, so that I could come in with some thoughts. So I actually thank you for doing that, and I hope you continue to do that. Okay. In terms of my thoughts, whether or not this budget as submitted, and I commend the Town Manager, his directors, and whoever did the budget on the education side, I will tell you, I couldn't find waste. I couldn't find excess. It didn't seem to be there. Now, I admit, I'm probably closer to the education side than I am to the town side.
Tom, I'm sorry, your five minutes is up. You can come back up.
Is it possible to give 30 seconds? Because I'm almost done. It's up to you.
If we give it to you, we got to give it to everybody, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you. Tony Allegro?[685.82][685.82](APPLAUSE).
All right. Tony Allegro, 3 Clinton Lane. Gosh, Tom, thank you. That was, you said a lot of things that I wanted to say, and you said it much better than I, so I'm glad I followed you.[716.82][716.82](LAUGHTER). But gosh, I want to first make it a point to all of you in front of me. Thank you. You guys do this job voluntarily. Anyone that just sat through that budget, your probably head is spinning back there, trying to just figure out how you guys do all this. And you guys do it voluntarily, and you guys take, this time every year, everyone takes heat on both sides. So I just appreciate you, I respect you, and that's the first thing I wanted to say. Same goes to you guys over here. That was a tremendous budget. I'm blown away. It's a lot to take in, but that's kudos to you guys. Very detailed, and is giving us a very good perspective. So I'm here as a teacher and as a parent in the district. I have two kids currently in Enfield Public Schools. Next year, I'll have three. But what Tom said is right. We really got to focus a little bit and come back to the matter. I don't see a lot of fat, any, I can't find any wastes in these budgets. You know, I've been looking at these budgets too on my own. I can't find it, and it is really, really tough times. I understand that. This is, everyone has their struggles. Everyone does. Myself, I work two jobs. I work two jobs. I have three kids. You know, it's a lot. I hate paying taxes. I'm sure, if we raised our hands, everyone here hates paying taxes. We really, really, really do. But in terms of what we use our tax money for, we heard a lot about priorities. These are our priorities in that Board of Education budget. They're also necessities to a lot of these people. They're not just priorities, they're necessities. We do a good job of hearing each other. I think we could do a better job of listening to each other. We spend a lot of time up here, and we spend so much time and energy looking at these budgets, that we feel the need intrinsically to fight for what we think is right, that sometimes we shut out the other side. I teach a community action learning class. I teach this to my students, that this is how a community should act. And sometimes I think we miss the mark. We do. I've heard comments like, "I love it when certain groups of people come up here and get us riled up." That hurts. That hurts. You're not listening to what we're saying. You're hearing it, you're not listening. We have a brand-new superintendent here, fresh eyes. We have a chairperson of the Board of Ed that has worked extremely hard on this budget. That 5.57% is what we need. It's not a suggestion, it's what we need. They understand the town. They understand the financial burdens that it's on our taxpayers. That budget that's presented is a need. We don't fulfill that, this is what it looks like. I'm going to tell you two stories. One is about a fourth-grade class with 29 students in it. 29 students and one teacher. Six kids with IEPs, four with 504 plans, and two students that are English-language learners. You do the math, that's a lot, for one teacher. Teacher delivers a lesson. All of those kids require one-to-one attention in a classroom of 29. That one teacher can't split themselves into 10 or 12 different roles at once. So what happens to those other kids? They're doing their lesson, but if they have trouble, the teacher's not available. Other kids are sitting there waiting. And these aren't incompetent teachers. These are brilliant teachers. These are good people that know what they're doing. That's the reality. Those are the kids that need something on a regular basis, on an everyday basis. The other kids, they need to be done with their work. They're not getting the challenge. You could only handle so much at once. When we look at those numbers and we look at class sizes, it matters. This isn't 1990 and 1985 where we could throw 30 kids in a class. The structures of school are much different. You guys know it more than anyone else. State mandates make this job hard, impossible.
Tony.
I'll come back later, but thank you.
Thank you, Tony.[1011.54][1011.54](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach Sinoni, 6 Howard Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I will try to make my comments relatively brief, and it is my final week of my senior year of college, and I actually have things to do this evening. So I have a few things I wanted to bring up, starting with social services. Councilor Ludwig had noted last, during the presentation by social services, that the general fund revenue from the Town of Enfield continually is increasing in the portion of the social services budget. And what we haven't been able to see is what we are supplementing within that budget specifically, and what programs is required by the state of Connecticut, which ones we're doing of our own discretion. And I think it would be helpful to see, because it's a really significant portion of our budget, and I have no idea where this money is going. Yet, if this linear increase continues, we're going to be spending more and more, yet getting the same level of services. So that's concerning to me, and I think we should be able to see specifically, line by line, where that money is going, and what we're required to do, and what we're not choosing to do. Some things on Public Works. We have more individuals with the title of director in Public Works than the city of Hartford does. The city of Hartford has one director and an assistant director, and we have three deputy directors, a director, and an assistant director, in a town that's a third of the size with a third of the personnel. And I understand there's some things we have to consider with contractual obligations and titles, but that's something that we need to look at closer with. I know that there was some revisions made last budget cycle, and I think we need to do that this budget cycle. I have some thoughts on the CIP. If we're considering consolidation, I'm not sure why we're going to spend $90,000 on a Hazardville Memorial Boiler. It doesn't make sense to me. And we just constructed a six-figure playground here at Higgins Park that didn't exist 10 years ago, yet we want to do $225,000 for poured-in rubber at Alcorn, which is a half a mile away. That doesn't make fiscal sense to me either, and I know there's other opportunities such as engineered wood fiber that are more cost-efficient, even if we decide that it's actually in the interest of the Town of Enfield to have two playgrounds a half a mile apart of each other that cost half a million dollars each. And on the school board. Being an educator is hard, and finding good educators to work in challenging districts is really tough. I've had the opportunity to work in tough districts, and I will admit that I could, I don't think I could ever do it again. I work in Summers, I've worked in Long Meadow, I student-taught in South Windsor. I like having a district that is well-funded. And it's a godsend that there's people that are willing to make $20,000 less than what I'm willing to make, and have three times the level of responsibilities, because I couldn't do it. I just couldn't. I don't have the time, the energy, to do that. And I love my job. I knew I wanted to do it since I was in kindergarten. So when we talk about what investments are we willing to make here, I think what the Board has put forward is reasonable. They put three different tiers forward, and they chose the one right down the center. No other department in the Town of Enfield had the level of personnel cuts that the Board of Education has had to deal with, and the impacts are incredibly significant. I understand our town is changing. It's my understanding that the majority of students leaving Enfield High School no longer go on to receive a four-year college degree. Does that mean we potentially need to re-envision what programs and courses we provide? Yes, it does. But there's programs and courses like AP classes that were cut. Does that affect students going to college? Yes. Are there as many students going to college in Enfield as five years ago? No. So that's a conversation worth having. But what about the students going on to career technical education? Because we cut the services and support that they relied on to get those jobs. We had two career counselors in a community that is becoming less interested in going towards a four-year university. Those are the services we should be investing in, and we pulled away from them. And I think that was a mistake. Every classroom deserves to have the supports that it needs. I understand we will not get there next year. We're not going to get there in five years. And quite frankly, this budget isn't perfect, but it makes some semblance of investment. And I think we need to look more at the town side for cuts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Zach.[1331.04][1331.04](APPLAUSE). Zach, were you done with your comments? Because I'm, you're good. Okay. No, I'm just trying to list them for a second round, so they get a first shot.
No worries, no worries.
Thank you, Danielle.
No problem. Danielle Gerard, Edgewood Drive. This is a little different for me, because I usually come with a speech, but tonight I'm not doing that. I need you guys to hear it all from the heart, and how I feel. People don't want to come and talk. I am so happy to see this room and that list of people. It's amazing. People don't want to come here and talk, because they struggle with the ridicule that they get from people in the town, and sometimes the people on this dais. And it's scary, and it's sad. I know that you don't get paid to do this, and you shouldn't be pushed at, but you're here to make big decisions for the people that are in our town, from the really, really tiny ones to the older ones, all of them. So it does take a village, and this community is a village in every sort of way. Our teachers are part of our village. I am friends with some of the teachers that taught my children to this day. Head Start, losing anything with Head Start will break the kids in this town. My child, who's autistic, grew so much just from that Head Start program and being in that integrated program. The support services that she received to be where she is right now, I don't know if you can really hear that much, she's actually being fantastic, both of them are, but she wouldn't be here in this space right now if it wasn't for those services and everything that she has been given in this school system. Tomorrow, I walk into her IEP. I have absolutely no idea what I'm going to go into, because I don't know what services are going to be given to her, or what she can get because of what's happening. So the support in this town is needed, especially with our education. It does start with the money. Unless you continue to understaff our teachers, they're going to walk. They're going to leave. Don't try to hire new teachers, because guess what? There's no one that's going to want to come here. If you're not going to pay your teachers properly, or support your teachers the way, and all the staff, the way that they should be treated and supported, no one's going to want to come here. It's clear. It's, it really is appalling to have officials, all of you, any of you, say anything about our parenting skills. We are raising a different generation of kids. They are on, they are on their tablets and phones and internet more than you can possibly imagine. My kids are showing me things that I didn't even know about technology, and I started the generation with technology. So it's scary. It is really, really frightening. So they are teaching us so much, and it's a different world. It really, really is. We have to be 15 steps ahead of these kids, because it's insane. And I think it's really hard about, like, the parenting part of it, because where are we blaming this on the parents? Where's the statistics stating this? Where is the support in our town for parents that are maybe struggling with their children on a behavioral level? Again, it's that village. If I'm struggling with my kid, guess what? I have a mom's group that I reach out to, and there's my support. I have teachers and other support people that I can reach out to, and I'm comfortable with reaching out with. We need more support for the residents in this town, the parents in this town. Even the older generation can help us, maybe we can teach them something. We can't keep flat funding. We've got to support this. We really, really, really need to support this budget. You guys have done a fantastic job. And when I said at my last, when I spoke last, and I said that it was like an extensive booklet, I see the booklet that you guys were picking up. It's fantastic. You've done a fantastic, fantastic job. Just remember, employees don't quit companies, they quit bosses. So you guys are really, you know, making sure that our administrative staff is going to be the one that's supporting our teachers. I'm not saying all of them don't, but there's a significant amount that do not. So we need to take another quick look at those administrators, and making sure that they're really taking care of those teachers and the support that they need to do. If we don't take care of this, we don't support the students, it's going to, our kids are going to suffer, the teachers are going to suffer, the community is going to suffer. So we need to be there for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.[1662.04][1662.04](APPLAUSE). Aiden?
Aiden Taito, 42 Green Manor Road. One year ago, I sat in these same seats and urged you to fully fund our schools with an 8.68% increase sought by the Board of Ed to maintain the status quo, which was funded in part by expiring COVID money. The Republican majority on this council chose to cut money from what was needed by the Board, citing political buzzwords like transparency, reckless spending, accountability, and a zero tax increase. Since then, we've gotten a new superintendent who has provided an extremely detailed line-item budget, to the point where I could find individual staff members I'm familiar with in this book if I wanted to, which is exactly what you guys asked for. And as we all know, when the cost of everything rises, it's unrealistic to expect any budget to stay flat. The council budget's increasing as well. The council majority last year made choices that dismayed aspects of our school system, but you have a chance to set it right this budget cycle by providing the Board of Education with the 5.57% increase as they've requested. You have a chance to lower education elementary class sizes. You have a chance to bring back much-needed support such JFK and Enfield High, and you have a chance to bring back sports and extracurricular activities. I'm a senior this year, so I won't be affected directly by the choices you make this budget cycle, but my friends, family, and community will, and I'll remember your choices when I go to vote in my first election this November. I thank you for your time and hope you can learn from your mistakes and fund our schools. Good night. Good night.
Thank you, Aiden.
Melanie Culpecks, 200 North Maple Street. I'm here tonight to ask you to support the full budget approved by the Board of Education. Our schools need that money. In fact, our schools need much more. But we have been forced into a take-what-we-can-get mentality due to the massive cuts that were made last spring and how that has changed our entire school system. I have been a counselor at JFK for the past 27 years, and I have seen the ups and downs in our school budget. The hit we took last year was by far the worst yet. We need to start the process of rebuilding so we can provide a quality education for the children of Enfield. It is what they deserve. Over the past few months, we have heard from parents, teachers, community members, and even students about how the changes in our schools have affected them. In my opinion, it is terrible that students have had to come and speak at a public meeting to ask for what they need and that parents have been brought to tears while telling you about how their children have struggled. I have personally heard comments from parents such as, "I'm so glad my daughter is almost done with high school," and "I'm so happy my kids have already graduated." I am sad to say, I feel exactly the same way. I'm thankful that my daughter received a top-level education, all the way from kindergarten through high school, by being a part of the Enfield Public Schools. Our current and future students need that chance as well. How are we to expect to attract and keep quality teachers in Enfield? Many of our dedicated teachers have already left, some after decades of service to this town. How are we to expect young families to want to move into town if it appears that Enfield does not fully support its children? Without a strong school system, we cannot have a strong town. If things do not improve, all of our residents will suffer, especially the youngest ones. I'm sure that's not what you, our town leaders, want to see happen. With that in mind, I again ask you to fully fund the budget put forward by the Board of Education. Our town needs you. Our town needs your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Good evening. Tricia Wright, 66 Oakwood Street. And if you give me a second, I'm going to try to know that I know how to use technology. Okay, here we go. My name is Tricia Wright, 66 Oakwood Street. I'm a member of Enfield for Education, a bipartisan group that believes we must assure quality education that our students deserve. My sons are alumni of Fermi and Enfield High. I have no relatives in the school system, no students nor related to any employees. I am neither a Republican nor a Democrat. I come here tonight as a registered independent voter and taxpayer who is concerned about the lack of importance of all the adults, all of them, from principals down to our custodians and everyone in between, excuse me, in our schools who provide services to meet the needs of our students, and they have not been made a priority. I look back on my notes from previous Board of Ed meetings. I happened to attend the meeting where our superintendent, Mr. Macchio, presented the revised budget. One of the statements that struck me was when he spoke about not asking for another teacher in classroom unless he had the supportive staff to have it in the classroom with those teachers. I really agreed with that. That statement coincides with another takeaway that I had. A teacher very eloquently spoke about a certain grade level in all the different classrooms and how many kids were in each class, how many kids had IEPs and 504 plans, and each percentage got higher and higher. So what I would like to... Sorry, I'm speaking off and not reading what I wrote. Each classroom ratio was higher than the next, and most did not have any supportive staff, let alone the number of staff needed to ensure each student's needs are being taken care of. It is the law, which has not been stated tonight. So for people out in our audience that have not had special ed students or learning disability people in their families, it's the law that the teachers must comply with each IEP and 504 plan. The law unfortunately does not take into account that they have 30 faces staring at them, of which 12 have IEPs or 504s, and then there's 18 other students at various levels. Every student is impacted by this, no matter if they're special ed or not. One person cannot be expected to do this every day with no assistance. Short-term, sure. Long-term, absolutely not, and should be unacceptable. Ms. Erin Clark was also at a Board of Ed meeting that I went to, and she had a presentation that explained all the courses that no longer are taught at the high school, including computer classes, of which there are none being offered. It's 2025. Technology is here to stay. How do we justify no computer classes? The superintendent, Mr. Macchio, and Ms. Clark, the principal at Enfield High separately praised the current teachers for their exceptional resilience, which didn't surprise me at all. Most teachers are in this profession for the kids. It's truly a calling, and they strive to make things good for the kids to the best of their abilities. But just because they made it through this year does not mean that this should be the new normal. The situation is unsustainable. I am sure you heard that teachers have left during this current school year. The number is now at 15. Take a moment and think about how bad it must have been for them to make that agonizing choice to leave their students. My last takeaway was a statement that Ms. Riley, our Board of Ed chairperson, said. "It's difficult to create a budget when the state keeps changing the monies we get, whether it's reimbursement or other funding." I believe that they have, the Board of Ed, along with the superintendent, created a reasonable budget. While it does not get the schools back to where they were, it's a start in the right direction. I don't think any of you are against education. I really don't. I think last year should be chalked up to an anomaly and left in the past. I am asking you to take under advisement, which each of your caucuses have told you, and then I ask for one more step. Please, seek out some parents, students, and school staff. Ask them how their school year went. Maybe they have some more insight to lend you in helping you make an informed decision. And one last request I have, perhaps it would be possible to work as one collective group, Town Council and Board of Ed, when it comes to the state. One of the largest issues is the inconsistency with our education money. If that could be more reliable, wouldn't that be a win for both sides? It shouldn't be us or them. You all represent every resident in our town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tricia.
First, I'd like to thank all of you for all the time you put in. And the other thing I ought to say, I was impressed. New guy? I had never been impressed by a school superintendent. And I'll tell you right now, I'll tell you right now, you kind of screwed me on what I have to say here, too. Part of what I...
Tom, can you just state your name?
Oh, Tom Walsh, Roseanne Street. Part of what I had to say was that you people really need to sit down and find ways to make your school system more efficient. And apparently, you seem to be working in that direction. That being said, the proposed mill rate increase is somewhat deceiving. Because you said it's 32.23? That's not what it is, okay? That doesn't include our fire tax. You got to add on additional 3.4 to 5.74 mills onto that, which actually makes the mill rate 35.48 to 37.97, depending on where you live in town. And that's only if the fire tax stays the same. I'm definitely not in favor of a tax increase, all right? However you make it work, I'm not against funding education. We have one person sitting up here right now that should be doing more, along with all his colleagues, to get us state funding, all right? And all you people behind me, that's where you should be taking your fight, to the state level. Because it's not fair to put this on the back of taxpayers. And like the first gentleman that spoke, I'm in that same thing. I'm retired, both me and my wife. This tax increase ain't going to put me in a poorhouse, but I'm tired of it because I'm going to skip a back here, skip back. Everybody was saying how, you know, we flat fund everything, there's no tax increases, this and that. Well, apparently, my tax bill in 2021 went up $229. 2022, it went up $560. 2023, it went $307. And this year, if you do what you did, it's $445. So that, if you include this year's, when I pay my tax bill, that will be just in the last four tax bills. My taxes went up $1,542, all right? For some people, and I'm not talking about just senior citizens, all right? I'm talking about, there's a lot of people out there, young, old, that this could be the straw that breaks the camel's back. There's people out there now that are living paycheck to paycheck, and they probably don't come here and speak up because either they don't want to speak up, or they're afraid to, or they're working. But anyways, that being said, this isn't, like the lady said, all this isn't sustainable. You can't do it on the backs of homeowners, all right? The state should be, the state makes the mandates, the state makes the rules, the state should be paying for it, all right? You showed that thing on the town side, pilot. That's a joke and a half. You know who should be paying for our sewer system? The prisons. Everybody's sitting there all day long, eating crapping, all right? And when our sewer system came to, of course, our sewer system was in the predicament as it is because of poor maintenance and very bad planning over many, many years. Right now, my taxes are over $500 a month. That's what I pay for the pleasure to live in scenic Enfield. If you pass it the way it is now, it's going to be almost $600 a month. For what? What do I get? You pick up my garbage? And we have police protection, but I don't live in a section of town where they're there all the time. So basically, you're picking up my garbage and plowing my street. But again, and my house isn't anything special. It's a 1965 Star Ranch with an addition on the back of it. So again, Mr. Santinella, you and your cronies down there in Hartford, you guys need to start... And I understand, I had a guy, I used to have a guy who was like my uncle. And he told me how a legislator works years ago, because he was a legislator back in the '70s. You get there with all these great ideas, and you walk in the door, and the first day he was in there, somebody walks up to him and says, "It's done. I'll be back."
Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. You know full well, I want you to fund the budget as requested for the schools. When I was listening to the first part, talking about the luxury, the plans for the luxury apartments, that caught my ear. People that are looking to pay, willing to pay that kind of money for apartment, if they have children, will not pay it for a school district that is not supported and providing not just the basics, but beyond the basics. What this one is asking for is mostly the basics, to meet the requirements. It's not a frivolous budget. I don't know enough about the town side to think, to say if or not there's fat that can be cut in there. If there is, great, cut it. But there's not fat in the school district budget. And I don't, I have a lot invested in this, but it's from my heart. My children are all in high school. They're all at Enfield High. We don't have a whole lot longer with my kids being in the district. So it's not because they are going to get something from this. It's because every child deserves to have the best chance. And no, we're not wealthy. Actually, my husband's semi-retired. We're not wealthy. But you invest in what is important. And no, we don't want to pay extra taxes, but we will, and we won't say that it's not worth it. The schools need to be strong, they need to be supported, and it needs to be known as that, as something of our town is known as a town that supports their schools, and not denigrating the staffing.
Thank you, Maureen.
Hi, Kelly Hemler, 10 Hartford Ave. I'm not here to yell at you. Yes, education is very important, but so is public safety, roads, services, sewers, libraries, all the employees that make the town and the schools run. They're all very important. However, we also need to remember to respect and look out for the Enfield taxpayer, who is footing the bill for everything. I heard somebody actually say the school budget was more important than a sewer project. I wonder if they would still think that if raw sewage was pouring into their basement or their toilet didn't flush. It's all important, but it needs balance. To everybody who in the past couple months have come up and say they're happy to pay more taxes, well, that's great for you, and I'm not being sarcastic. Unfortunately, that's not the majority of Enfield residents. Many residents are seniors, and they've been footing the bill all their lives for the education, the roads, the sewers, and now they're aging in their home with fixed incomes. There's also young families that are living paycheck to paycheck. And seemingly, small increases in costs can price somebody out of their home, and I think we need to be sensitive to that. And even to people that are renters like myself, tax increases affect us as well. Our landlords have to pass along the costs. One of the tax increases a few years ago made my rent go up, which was a big impact. And anybody who says that they can pay more taxes, the Board of Ed and the town sure will be happy to take your donation, so feel free to pass that along. So I know you have to look at the whole thing, and I really don't envy any of you to make this decision, but if you raise taxes, even a small amount, it's going to harm people. So we just have to be creative and just make this work. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Good evening. Amanda Pickett, a resident of Guild Street. I'm also a parent of a second and fourth grader. I'm here tonight as a mom. I have made my comments as a board member in my seat on Tuesday nights, so tonight I'm here as an invested parent and a District 1 resident. First, as a community, nobody wants to see taxes increase, especially as our economy is crumbling. We don't just need to go to the state, we must go to the feds. However, we all have to pause and reflect on what services we receive due to our taxes: weekly garbage pickup, police and emergency response, youth and social services, community events, and our schools. We also have to acknowledge that someone paid the bill for you. Kids can't vote. We can't continuously flat fund. There are contractual increases, inflation, cost adjustments that happen... There are contractual increases, inflation, cost adjustments that happen normally. We are in many of our tough spots because of historical mismanagement of taxpayer dollars, kicking the can and taking from Peter to pay Paul. This is not sustainable. I heard many of you campaign and continue to talk about transparency. I'm concerned that our residents didn't have the time to be adequately prepared for tonight's budget hearing. Until today, the town budget materials weren't available on the town website. I shouldn't be directed to a website created by a resident that has bullied me personally and the Enfield Public Schools to get town public information. And I should have more time than from the end of my workday to coming here to review the materials. I'll add that the Board of Ed budget has been clearly posted on our website since February. Thankfully, I do my best to stay informed. I watch your meetings, I've seen most of the budget deliberations, and intimately know the Board of Ed budget. I'm asking that you prioritize our students and pass the Board of Ed budget as presented. You may say, comments like, "We failed out the Board of Ed plenty of times," or how we've overspent using COVID funds, but the data and the facts don't lie. Most of the funds the town depends on for personnel, facilities, and other things come because of our eligibility for schools. It's because kids are in those buildings. That's why we get the money that we get. Our kids deserve to be prioritized. Our data showed the positive impact of additional COVID funds. I'm happy to meet with any of you to talk about ways that we can save money long-term with upcoming plans that we are working on. Listen to our students. They don't get to vote, but they feel the impact most. Their perspective matters. Center the students in your decisions, their needs, and the resources it takes to support them. Don't blame them. Maureen, I heard you say that you're unsure about what's the right number. What does it cost to educate our kids? Well, I'm going to tell you, we need every penny. And if you want comparisons of what numbers may look like, check out the communities around us and how they fund our schools. Also, take a look at the tiered options that the Board of Ed was provided. It clearly outlines a roadmap to better success. Remember that there are faces behind the numbers, and I know that you know that most intimately. I also want to say that our families are engaged. They're doing the best that they can. We need community support to meet the diverse needs of our community. I'm glad Charlotte clarified that there's not two budgets, as you, Mr. Mayor, have said in last meeting. I'm proud of how our Board of Ed are working collaboratively and in a bipartisan manner to understand the needs of our students and staff and address best next steps. We know that we can't bet against our kids. I want to clarify the unique situation that we're in with a town covering our custodial facilities, security, and IT. I want to clarify that per pupil expenditure does not include those capital expenses. So we are comparing apples to apples with that per pupil expenditure. The town expenses is not part of the calculation that compares communities. I end tonight begging you to please listen to our needs. Our kids deserve better. My babies, your grandbabies, multiple of you up there have children in our schools. They deserve better. Fully fund our schools. You hold the power. Use it for good.[786.69][786.69](APPLAUSE).
Five Clear Street? Oh, there we go, okay.
So hi, everybody. Like I always say, thanks for coming in and doing what you do. And the budget part from the Board of Ed, I have to say, was very well done.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Neil Narcon, N-A-R-K-O-N, Five Clear Street in town. But the Board of Ed, the charts and everything were very well done and presented, did a very nice job putting that all together, so it kind of leaves, fill in a lot of blanks we'd never seen before. I just wish it was out early, but what are you going to do? But at least it's there now, we can still go back and review it, which is a good thing, too. As far as adding staff and everything, I think that's a good idea, you know? Even if classes get to the little higher size and everything, if you have teachers' helpers, and outside of that, the social workers, nurses, counselors, whatever, that's not a bad thing to have. Because today, it's a lot different with kids today than it was when we were in school. As far as administrative stuff, I always had a dim view on that because they're very expensive for what you get. And I'd rather see that money go towards, more towards the staff on, in the people in trenches there, for more teachers, more programs there. Give them supplies so they can run a classroom, you know? Pens and pimples, papers, stuff like that is pretty much nonexistent. A lot of kids don't even have that, believe it or not. So as a taxpayer, you know, looking at this town like a total business, we need, I like to see some accountability for all this. You've got a lot of money supposedly going into this, you've got more support staff, and I'd really want to see the test grades get out of the trenches and really get up and make us proud of that, at least get on the list, because we're not on the list as far as student performance anywhere. Keeping in mind, a lot of kids on the bottom end, they're not even included in those test scores, they're excluded. On the town side there, again, increases are tough. I mean, there's a lot of things you really can't control, but I don't see why there shouldn't be any kind of consortiums working with other towns to get together for purchasing supplies and looking for insurance groupings to get together and buy insurance as a group and see what's going on to kind of control those expenses. Because right now, everybody's going off on their own, doing their own thing. And even on the school board, a lot of schools are ordering their own supplies individually instead of going through a major distribution hub. Basically, people are tapped out right now. A lot of the alternate news sources I watch, and you know, a lot of people are just, the money's gone, credit cards are loaded up, savings is gone from all the inflation and such. And they're, right now, they're financing their McDonald's meals and buy now, pay later type stuff, and it's, I don't know how much longer they're going to hang on. They're not hanging on. There's really no, there's no disposable income for anybody anymore. So every little increase, every little penny that goes somewhere else comes out of our pocket. It's something else that we're going to not be able to do. I spoke more than once getting onto the trash thing real quick about how Governor Lamont just dropped this whole trash energy plant in Hartford. And I suggest at that time, they should, you guys should at least get together with some other towns and all of them that are affected by that closure, and put some pressure on Hartford to get into that and do a class action suit or whatever, because now he's making everybody scramble for it. And I'm starting to read these little things here, the town's, of course, having problems with pricing and stuff like that. It's going to be, it's not going to go away. You know, it's, like I say, you'd better have a good budget, because a lot of people are just going to start dumping stuff on the side of the road here and there, because everything's shrinking. The cost of buying an extra barrel went up this year big time. I don't know, you know, it's just, it's something that's always going to be there. We're all going to generate some byproducts and recycling and stuff like that. Yeah, I think that pretty much... Oh, yeah. On the police department, there's always been a situation with really high excessive overtime. So something we can work on then with over there and see what's what. Maybe they've got to hire more people, I don't know. But it seems like overtime is a way of life over there. And when that happens, their pensions are going to be increased on the bottom end of it, too, as well. So I mean, that has a long, long, big cost for that. So take a look at that, if you would. Okay, thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. Joshua Hamery, 52 New King Street. I'm here for a little bit of retrospection. Couple of things I want to first off talk about. I work in the homeless, in a homeless shelter. I see what causes it firsthand every day, and little bit has to do with substance abuse or alcohol or anything like that. A lot of it has behavioral health issues at the root of the cause for those folks that we have in our shelter. I'm also coming from a background working in military support. Currently, I'm reading a book about aid deployments that took place in 2005, where there was some casualties in the units that were deployed, and terms that were used in the book include tourniquets and stuff of that nature. I mention that because in this town, last year, the cuts that had to be made were devastating and predictable, as they were talked about last year. We are beginning to see that in real life, in real, everyday terms, and the tourniquet that is this budget will hopefully be enough to prevent any further damage, any further loss. I do want to take one quick side note to congratulate Councilman Santinella for the work that he's done to bring the money to this town that hasn't been brought to the town by previous representatives, and the efforts that have not been made by the Republican State Representative and the Republican Senator to bring to the town the money that is out there. Councilman Santinella's been in place for less than 100 days, and has already gotten $10 million for our mall, over $1 million for our school district, and over $60,000 for P-Flag. Our current Republican representatives have not made the effort to find that money or ask for it. But back to the current situation. Been in town over 25 years. Our taxes have more than doubled over that time. Everybody said we don't want to pay more taxes, and we don't. But we have to, because we have responsibilities, we have obligations. We have to take care of the things that need to be taken care of. No, I don't want to have raw sewage backing up into my home. I've had that once because our clay pipe shattered because of the tree roots that grew through it. Not a pleasant experience. We had to take on the additional loan to pay for that. And we did that not because we were financially independent and we had good connections, we did that because Social Services had a program that helps homebuyers make emergency repairs. I don't think that program is in place anymore, and it's unfortunate. But it was very helpful for us at the time, and we had to pay. I had to work three jobs at one point. I can appreciate what that means. Fortunately, I don't have to do that right now, but my children are also going to be grading out, graduating out of Enfield Public Schools this year. We've been through the reorganization, and my son was the losing end of that stick. We've been through the closing of the neighborhood schools. My son was the losing end of that stick. My son was the losing end this year when the Career Center was closed at the high school, among other programs that were cut. We've seen the negative impacts of these decisions that were made over the years despite our taxes increasing, and despite what was being sold as waste to save money by consolidating. It's all not happened that way. The stories that we were told over the years were not what came to be. So I'm going to ask that we support the students, the families, the staff, the faculty, the administration, everyone that has an invested interest in the betterment of our town and our families and our development, and support the minimal budget that has been requested. I'm not saying the lowest level of the budget that's been requested, but this is an investment, and at the very least, do what's best. We all want the best things for this town, and we do have to make the payments that are long overdue for that to happen. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Anyone else for the first time? Seeing none.
Tom Cremona, 19 Tyler Road. Well, there's been a lot said tonight, right? It's so hard to digest it all. I'm sure it's overwhelming. You know, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the comments that were already made. But I feel I do want to say one thing about last year, and that was, I was also, even though I don't have any grandkids in the school system, I was personally impacted by last year as well. My daughter-in-law was Teacher of the Year in Hartford. Imagine that, with all that brings. She moved for one year to Enfield, and then she lost her spot. So we did that, and you know what? I was able to explain to her why. And I was able to explain that it was a situation that was no win. So I've heard comments tonight about how bad that was. It was. It was horrific. But it was a no-win situation last year. Well, I think it's time to close that book. And I think it's time to focus on this year and to recognize that what had to happen last year created a hole. The hole has to be filled. Not completely, not totally, and I don't think that's what that education, this year's budget, does. But it's a step in the right direction. So that's my closing comment, and again, thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, I'm just going to kind of pick up where I left off. So I said I wanted to tell you guys two stories. That first one was just kind of what that budget from last year brought to an everyday fourth grade classroom. You can see it's, for one teacher to do all of those things is impossible, and no matter if your kid is on an IEP or 504 or an English language learner, all 29 students are negatively impacted in that situation. Tom said it just great, you know? It was a no-win last year, absolutely. And it's tough. You guys make a lot of tough decisions, and that's why you're here, and I applaud you for having the courage to make those decisions, whether you want to do them or not. But a lot of you up here, too, said at this time last year, "I promise you," quote, "I promise you, things will be better next year. It's now that time." Right? So how is it going to be better? If they're saying, and they're doing their due diligence, which I can't prove that they didn't do any due diligence because, or a bad job, because it was so detailed, there's no fat there, right? But for the people that may not know, the history, the recent history of this town, we got caught in the perfect storm. We lost LEGO, we lost Hallmark, we lost Mass Mutual. Malls suddenly didn't become a thing anymore. We had a failing mall. Our major tax contributors to this town left. They left. And then where does the burden fall? It falls to the homeowners. Nobody in this room wants more taxes. We all have our problems and our difficulties. This is not an affluent town. And you're darn right, I'm getting tired of paying more taxes, too. But you know what I'm also getting tired of? I'm getting tired of everything else being more expensive. We can't control that. We can't. So when we go zero, that's a negative, guys. When we go zero, it's a negative, because everything that surrounds us is getting more expensive. So a zero is a cut in reality, because something is going to get cut because everything else is going up in price. That is the reality. So here we are. We are here facing what to do, all right? And I hear a lot of comments about, well, what does my tax dollars do for me? That hurts. It's not about me, it's not about me, Tony Legro. It's not about any of you individually, it's about our community. So yeah, when you pay that 1,000-something dollars for your taxes, I'll tell you one thing it went for besides garbage pickup and everything else that we get on a daily basis, that we take probably for granted. Part of that, I'll tell a personal story. My daughter had a sudden allergic reaction one year on New Year's Eve. I had to call 911. Guess who showed up right away? The fire department and the ambulance. Y'all paid for that. You all paid to save my daughter's life. That's what a community is about. For you guys up here, and maybe I won't tell the second story, because this is more important. For all you up here, you're going to get votes because of who you are. Because of who you are. You're not going to get votes because you've said time and time again, 0%, 0%. And if we don't do that, we're going to lose votes. The people that are going to vote for you are going to vote for you no matter what, because of who you are. But I want to vote for people that are going to be there for my community and support my community. That includes the Board of Education budget of 5.57%. To tell you the last story really quick before my time runs up, if this is what you want again next year, and you go any lower than that, this is another typical situation. My son is in first grade. Kindergarten was his first year last year. Love school, most kindergarteners do. Most first graders love school. My experience in the first month of school was bringing my son to a high school. severe migraines. And it was nothing to do but the chaos of having 29 kids in a classroom. He couldn't take it. A wonderful teacher knows how to control a classroom, has wonderful classroom management. But you get excited kids into the first two weeks of school, and you put 29 of them in a classroom with no support but just one teacher? He literally lost his mind. We didn't know what was wrong with them. We had to bring him to the hospital, and they said it was migraines caused by severe stress for a seven-year-old. For a seven-year-old kid, guys. So, you go any lower than that, you're going to have these same and common stories, and this is just mine. There's thousands of people that attend our schools. Four-something thousand. Multiply that, or add two to three more than that. That's a whole family. You're talking about thousands of Enfield residents that may not have the time to come up here. I had to get a babysitter to come here tonight, just to talk. There's people that don't and can't. They have to bring their kids to soccer practice, to softball, to do this, to do that. They can't come up here. But I'm telling you, there's hundreds of stories just like mine. I will gladly pay just a little bit more of taxes for my neighbor when they have an emergency, for my friend that maybe their sewer's going out to make sure their house doesn't. And it's not about just Board of Education budget. All of these things are important, but the reality is, we do not have tax income from other places, like all these corporations that left us. And we're on a great path. See that? That presentation by the town manager?
Tony, you're two minutes over. I let you go on, so...
I'm, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was trying to, but he's not...
I appreciate that. I'm just saying, the plans for the future are beautiful, and I think it'll bring those businesses back, and that'll help us. But for right now, we've got to do what we can to help each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Tom? Tom? Yeah, I got him down. Just a second. You wanted to come back up, right?
Yeah. I guess my comment, Tom Walsh, Roseanne Street. I guess my comment about what I get was taken, maybe I didn't say it well enough. But, yeah, I understand ambulances and all that. And I'm not against education. Don't get me wrong. You can fund that budget, but find it somewheres else. Because what I was going to say, with our legislature, I mean, it's like a good old boys' club there, from what I was told by a state legislator. And so, you get what they want you to get, but they make the mandates, you guys make the rules. You need to pay for it, all right? State needs to pay for this. We're supposed to be getting, I think somebody said, what, 90-something percent from the state, and we're getting, what, 60? All right? Why? If you made mandates, you need to pay for them. You tell us, "These kids got to have certain things," then the state needs to pay for it, you know? You can't, again, it's just not sustainable this way, because at $500 or $400 increase a year, and my house ain't worth $300, apparently, you know? So, there's people out there, this is going to be way more of an increase. And granted, okay, it's needed for the education system, but we can't sustain it. And again, this won't put me and my wife in the poorhouse. But there are other people in this town. You know, there's single people that live alone, and an increase like this will hurt them, especially somebody that bought a house that's now $400,000, worth $400,000, and they bought it when it was 14.5, you know? These houses have gone up. Somebody retired 10 years ago, and their social security ain't nothing, or a lot less than what we get now. So, those people are stuck, you know? And the same thing with younger people that bought homes in this town. And then, you know, the economy is crap, and things are more expensive. And some of these younger people, it's going to affect, too, you know? So, I really think that everybody, I'll go with you, have to go to the state and force them to pay for what they want us to give these kids, because you can't keep doing it with property taxes. It's just, it's... And another thing, here's the, I looked this up, and if it's wrong, blame Google. This is what the surrounding towns, this is last year's, from what I could find, and our last year's. Summers pays 28.31 mills. Suffield, 22.63. Windsor Locks, 28.14. Enfield District 1, 31.05. Thompsonville, 36.30. Hazerville, 33.81. And North Thompsonville, 33.81. Quite a bit of a difference. And I think one of the biggest reasons is, is we have, you know, our town has turned into, you know, fast food heaven here, and we need a police force. We need a large police force for this town. But yet, the surrounding towns, same thing with the fire department. We have four fire districts. The surrounding towns don't have that expense like we have. They have smaller police departments. Because you want to know why? Because they borrow ours when they need it. Same thing with the fire department. Something major happens, Enfield shows up. They pay us for it, yeah. But they ain't carrying that cost 24/7, 365 days a year. They just pay for it when they need it. We pay for it whether we need it or not. So, there's another thing that should be looked at. But again, the education, you should pass this budget if that's what they need. But from here on, we need to go to the state, and the state needs to kick in more money, because it's just the way it is, you know? You can raise the sales tax or something. This is, and another thing, this is a very unfair tax. One person that has a house that's assessed at $120,000 may be no more well-off than a person that bought their house in a little bit different neighborhood that now is worth, that's assessed at $250,000 now. This person still wants what they want, and this person here is paying a lot more for it than they are. So, it's very, it's uneven on how this stuff is funded. If the state was funding it on a different type of tax where everybody pretty much kicks in the same, it'd be different. And another one that I have, I have a thing about, is apartments. Another 800 apartments in this town isn't going to help this matter any. And people are saying, "Whoa, luxury apartments. Nobody's going to want to move here, because, hey, you know, we don't have a good school system. Our school system's going to be worse." Because I brought this up to you before. If you, people go out and look, rental properties do not pay anywhere as close to what a single-family home contributes to the... I looked up six-family house that had bicycles all over and kids' toys all over the yard. The thing was assessed for less than my house, all right? So, each one of them apartments is putting in 1/6 to the budget. Same thing with your bigger apartment buildings. I looked some of those up, too. I ain't saying any names. But on the average, they were $1,400 a year in property tax per unit, okay? So, now that mine's going to be almost $7,000 a year, maybe something has to be done, we don't need any more apartments, because they're just going to cost us more money. But maybe something needs to be done to bring up the rental properties, the transient population of the town, or what can be transient population, to kick in the same thing. Because the property tax, it's just not, it's not sustainable. You've got to come up with something else. And all of you, it's got to be the state.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, that's all I have. Maureen?
Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. I just wanted to clarify, someone had, must not have heard during the superintendent's and board chair's presentation. While the town side of the budget only became live available on the site today, the school district budget, the Board of Ed budget has passed, has been available since when it was passed in February. If you want to find it, go to enfieldschools.org and look around. You'll find it.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Council members, anything? We'll start discussions tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, down in the Skidico Room. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to come out tonight. I think you see, it's not an easy process. There's a lot of information to take in. Again, I apologize that the town's budget wasn't put out Friday, but it was available Saturday for everybody who was asking. I put it where they were asking, and the town made it available this morning. But stay tuned, because tomorrow night deliberations are also televised, and that's where we're done with the department heads, and this is where we're going to go page by page through the book. And each council member makes recommendations. We get consensus on it. And then, when we get to the end, we see where we end up and see how the budget balances out and see if we can get support to pass it. So, thank you again, everyone, for coming out tonight, and have a great night.
Motion, Second.
All in favor?